Okay, welcome everyone to the March 21st regular council meeting. And we will start off with approving the agenda. So be it resolved that the council of town of Niqwa approved the regular meeting agenda for March 21st. Moved by councillor Pottinger, seconded by councillor Nadeau. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, so everyone should have looked over their minutes that were sent out. So be it resolved that the council of town of Niqwa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held March 7th, 2023 as circulated. Moved by councillor Sicily, seconded by deputy mayor Parrot. All in favor, opposed, carried. Alright, so we're gonna move into public hearing. And we'll need a motion to move into that. So be it resolved that the council of the town of Niqwa do open this public meeting to hear representation to variation application. VO1-2023 of Sherri Francis Christensen, TDS on behalf of Big and Rich. So I need a mover and seconder. Councillor Sicily, seconded, councillor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, so Jeff, is it your spot?
Oh, yep, so yeah, I'm going to use this application V012023-n. And owner of properties Big and Rich Limited, applicant Sherri Francis Christensen, TDS. Repose the variation, and there's three parts to it. It's varied to allow the minimum site area for the proposed lot two to be reduced from the required 4,900 square feet to a proposed 4,097.9 square feet. Varied to allow the minimum site width of proposed lot two be reduced from the required 50 feet to a proposed 41 feet. And varied to allow the minimum side yard setback of the existing deck within lot one adjacent to proposed lot two be reduced from the required two feet to a proposed one foot, three inches. This is all within the RS residential single unit zone. Area affected is lot 15, block 30, plan 348, and part of Walker Avenue closed. More specifically being 350 Adelaide Crescent. And reason and support is to satisfy the subdivision requirements to sever a portion of land from a noted property for residential development. So these variations, these are all requirements out of zoning bylaw. The minimums, the proposed lot doesn't mean the minimum site area and width. The variation is required to have them approved. And third part being the deck, the existing deck can project within two feet of a property boundary. As the proposed boundary is closer than that, we chose to have it as part of variation as well, just to keep things clean and right.
So the conditions that when we approved the subdivision, we had subject to variances. And wasn't there one of the variances that are on the table today that has actually been approved?
Well, yeah, from the original proposal, the original subdivision proposal was, if I remember correctly, for a lot of 33 feet. That's since been retracted and reworked to increase the new proposed lot size, yes.
Okay, so.
So the original variation would have varied it from 50 feet to 30 feet, and then the site area from 4,900 to, I guess, somewhere 3,300. So that would have been the original variation, so. But that one was, that one was, was pulled back and the applicant revised the subdivision to increase this lot size, yes. I do have a couple, a couple emails to read in from our public circulation. So with the variation, the notification goes out to anybody within 100 meters of the property. And we received two meetings of communications. First one is to please register our objection to the application V012023-n affecting lots at 350 Adelaide Crescent, row number 74050. The area consists mainly of single-family dwellings on mostly 66-foot or larger lots. The addition of small homes on small lots does not fit into the neighborhood, and we feel that visually detracts from the aesthetics of the area and reduces property values of neighboring properties. For these reasons, we are objecting to proposal, and that was submitted by Leslie and Dennis Skavinsky at 328 Adelaide Crescent. And the second one was, so this is regarding application V012023-n affecting area 350 Adelaide Crescent, lot 15, block 30, plan 348, and part of Walker Avenue closed. I strongly oppose said request for variance. What is built there to date has affected property values and the aesthetics of the neighborhood. To cram another small house on that space makes absolutely no sense. Other than for financial gain for the developer, enough is enough. I am sending this response, oh yeah, so I'm sending this response present format because I did not receive the notice from the town office and was only informed by another. So there's a little bit more to that, so I did respond, it was sent out by mail. And yeah, submitted was not available since she asked me to read in. There's also a second part, and there was another thought is in regards to housing issues. With the increasing growth of the population in Niqwa, I do not believe that allowing this variance will alleviate the potential housing crisis. And I hope it will not be a factor in consideration of allowing the said variance. And that was submitted by Mois Hugh, I believe it's 355 McGill, if I'm correct, I didn't write down that name. Within the buffer of Mois, anyway, so. That was all the communication my officers received, so.
Okay, okay, so I think we also have someone else that wants to speak in opposition?
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Hegley, Town Council and administrative staff from the town of Niqwa. My name is Aaron Pudlow, and I'm a property owner directly to the east of the Big and Rich Limited development. I strongly oppose the variance application from being approved this evening for a couple of reasons. The first being drainage concerns. There's a tremendous amount of water that flows down the large hill on the west side of the Big and Rich development property, through the rock property towards my property. And as the developer for Big and Rich is designed, the water flows northward from Watson's property to the south of me, along my property's edge, along the northern ditch on the north side of my property. Most of last summer, including the times that were dry with no precipitation for extended periods, there's water sitting along the side of my property. With the addition of another house, where will this water go? Secondly, I have concerns regarding the present state of the sewer lines in my neighborhood. As they are very old, will they be able properly handle the increased flow from the new homes already built? And additional new home that is being planned? Having the opportunity to be on town council during the previous term has allowed me to see how the sale of this property not only affected our immediate neighborhood, but also the entire town of Niqwa. Prior to the development by Big and Rich, the property was meticulously looked after by Murray and Diane Watson and their family, at no cost to the town. It was a great green space area that was well looked after, safe for the neighborhood kids to play, and for the entire community to enjoy. Having an opportunity to see how much it costs to maintain green space in such areas as the flats in Riverbend Park while I was on town council, this was a substantial loss for the entire town of Niqwa when the green space was removed from our neighborhood. The Watsons covered all costs and labor to maintain the area. It's important for the town council members to be aware that the entire property being developed by Big and Rich was sold to the developer for $20,000. It presently has five new homes built, with the plans to add one more home if this variance is passed later this evening. How much did the town of Niqwa lose when this decision was approved to sell this property to Big and Rich at the town council meeting on March 20th, 2018? Looking at how much it would cost other builders to purchase lots necessary to build six homes, easily would have given the town of Niqwa enough to resurface a significant length of roadway in our community or put towards other projects. I hope the present town council, as well as future town council members, remember that properties available for housing in our community are very limited, and that both local and out-of-town developers should receive a fair treatment when given opportunities to develop. Properties being sold must be at a fair value for all interested developers. Green spaces within our beautiful community are also very valuable, and I hope that other gardens and park areas within our community do not face the same fate as the property has received. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. And then for speaking, for speaking of the application, I think we can move on.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Soski for presenting Big and Rich. I, we originally bought that property under the assumption that we would be able to cut that 33-foot lot back out in grandfathering it, which we found out that we couldn't because the land titles had a rule for that because it was, had to be tied to that closed road. So when I finally decided to try to go through the subdivision, we applied and you guys accepted it. But then we, when we found out going through the process that I had to get a variance for a small lot, where I figured out that I could make that lot bigger, so I could go with a bigger house to try and make it more appealing to the neighborhood. So we reapplied, we turned it, we backed out and we reapplied so we could do it properly. Otherwise, we'd have another long-skinned house in there. So our, our goal is to try and make that space usable because now that we've developed the rest of it, that's just a big crazy cycle where if I could put a house in there, I can regrade everything and make it better. Plus, we've also paid money to get an engineered drainage plant to make sure all that water that goes by all those properties goes up into the town property ditch and up across wherever it goes, like goes across the street or underneath the street now, the towns fix that corner up. So we're just assuming that everything should be good because we're gonna make it better and have one more, one more house in that development, which adds more money into the tax system, which contributes to long-term gain for everybody. It should hopefully add some more money and funds for the infrastructure.
What size of house would you be considering building now versus what you had for your?
That one, no, with the bigger size, we're gonna go, because of the side yards, we didn't, I didn't apply for a variance for a bigger house to ensure it on the side yards because we have six feet on one side and 10 feet on the other. So I was gonna go with a 20-foot, a 20-foot wide house by 42 or 40. It's just under 1,000 square feet, but it's 20 feet wide, which is wider than the last two that we did on that street. And then it allows for 16 feet of side yard to the east so that we can have a proper walking path on the side of the house and have another eight feet left over for a drainage ditch to, so it can be maintained. Because if there's ever a problem, I wanted enough space there between our property and Pudlow's property. If you have to get a machine in there to clean debris out or maintain flow, that we can do that. Otherwise, if we made it smaller, like if I went to the 10-foot side yard, which I could, by law, I wouldn't have enough room to get a machine in there to do any excavating or remove snow or debris or broken trees or whatever it may have you. So that's why we went with a 20-foot wide building or a plan one. Anything else here?
At this point, we're not approving any actual housing plans, it's just strictly the yard and the setbacks, right? Because that house design could change, there's nothing.
The variation for the lot size, yes, and the only side yard variations for the existing house to propose it out.
The only other thing is the drainage plan has that size of that on it too. Like the engineer took that all into consideration.
Shows a 20 by 50, yeah, 1,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So at that point, you're not looking at building another home immediately to the east of that because that was creating two lots, right, when we did these variations, right, did not create two lots?
No, it's just taking, it's taking one big lot and making two lots of it.
The house.
So only three, you have one lot.
So the house that's there gets its own lot, and then the new, new created side yard is where the new building is.
Yeah, just so there won't be another house immediately to the east of that, this will be the last.
That's the last house, not prior.
Right. Okay.
So you've got an engineered drainage plan, you've got your slopes for safety and access. You're dealing with the minimum size requirement of the house, so that's big enough. You've got line of sight. Your elevations are good, your building inspectors looked over the plans. And what we approved for the subdivision, you have improved on. And so the sewer flow, I would ask, Denis, could you comment on the sewer flow?
I'd have to look what our sewage model would dictate that out, but that street isn't a small street, so it's already about eight inch sewer on it. We just have to look at whether or not that eight inch would have to be upgraded in future years to accommodate flow. And that same flow would be affected by Hill-Cristwell and two districts into that line. So those are all factors we'd look at if we had to upgrade the street.
That also just to add one more thing, that lot is serviced. When we serviced everything when we started, we actually serviced that lot, you know? Because we thought we could, it was just a technicality through land titles is why we were going through all this.
And this remains a single-family home?
Yes.
Strictly a single-family home?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question for Jeff, is this, is what we're being asked tonight unusual? Is this something that's done often in the course of development?
When needed, yes, is the lot size. We have, we have various varying size existing lots, some of which anywhere from, I think we, like, down to 28 feet. There's a lot of 33-foot existing lots, there's many series in the 40-foot lots and 50 and 60s. So I mean, we do have, we do have a lot of varying existing lot sizes. Our zoning bylaw has currently chosen that anything new developed is 50-foot frontage, so. It's, it's not, it's not new to the town of Niqwa, a lot size in that 40-foot area, no.
Those are the two houses that I did on that street. That was a 66-foot lot, but it used to be two 33-foot lots. And I just went to the land titles and had them split, and I didn't even have to come here and pay them. It was 33-foot lot, it was grandfathered.
Yeah, that's right, like, it depends on how it was registered. In the case of this one, it was called a title consolidation, so they, originally the two lots had two titles. They consolidated two titles. The map still shows two lots, but the title shows one. That's, that's where the subdivision was triggered. And in the event where you have what's called a lot consolidation, you can take two 33-foot lots, you can consolidate the lots, but there's still an assessment that shows two titles. At that point, a lawyer could just pull those titles apart and you have two 33-foot lots again, without, without the subdivision application process. So that's, that's the difference in, in the two, in this case, right, just was how it was registered. When, whenever they were created or road was closed, however that happened, I don't know, but. What I might, I'd like to add, and I mentioned, the column is a condition on the variation for the existing deck, just as. Basically, the condition that I requested was that, because right now it looks like the deck is coming off the main floor, which is on a walkout scenario, so there's eight to 10 feet of area. I've asked this as a condition, that that never gets closed in as a structure below it so that there's always remains clear access to the rear yard because that would have essentially been its wider side yard for, you know, fire protection emergencies or anything like that. So there was just that one condition I requested if approved to be applied, so.
Okay, anyone else? If not, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So any more discussion on that? If not, we will adjourn this. Be it resolved that the council of town of Niqwa do now adjourn the public meeting, had hearing at, what is that, 7:22? 7:22, moved by. Councillor Nadeau, seconded by councillor Gerard, all in favor, opposed, carried. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Speaking of gentlemen, we have another gentleman joining us tonight, Mr. Don Wombley to talk to us about settlement services, thought on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and absolutely wonderful staff of the town of Niqwa. It's a pleasure to be here. I will tell you right now, I'm not asking for variance. Just wanted to give you an update with regards to Niqwa Settlement Services and some sense of context in history. Some of you, you know what exists, but you don't always know what we do. So Settlement Services is a program that was funded by the federal government, started in 1996. And so it's been running for fairly lengthy time. When it started in 1996, the federal government wanted to provide services towards permanent residents because those people had made a commitment to come and stay and live and work and hopefully become citizens in this country. So the rest of the country excluding Quebec, because we always have to exclude Quebec because they do a different thing, B.C. and Manitoba made arrangements with the federal government to use the federal money to run the program provincially. It seems to make sense at the time. So from 96 to 2013, the province ran the program, but essentially their focus was not permanent residence, it was to develop and build their provincial nominee program. That's really what it ended up being. In 2013, the federal government said, that's not what we're giving you the money for. They re-appropriated the program or repatriated the program, so it came under their control and auspices at that time. It meant that the program went from, the agency went from working exclusively with temporary foreign workers, helping them with their application for the nominee program, for, for the permanent residence program. When they got it, PR sort of disappeared into the woodwork. And in 2013, over one weekend, that changed and the focus is nothing but permanent residence. We were not able to deal with temporary foreign workers. And I say that because I'll refer to that later on. So it meant we lost those people who came. Typically, a temporary foreign worker, it takes around two years to three years to get their permanent resident status. They work here for six months regularly, full-time job with a letter from their employer. It entitles them to apply to the province to become a nominee. Essentially, what they're doing is they do all the vetting and everything else like that. And the province looks at it and says, you know what, we think you're a really good person. We would like you to stay, so we will give you a certificate of nomination. That's very important. This is one of many avenues for people to get in, and the simplest if you're not a highly educated person and you already have a job waiting for you. They have six months with that certification to apply for permanent resident status. And based on that, typically, once you do that, all things being equal, you'll become a permanent resident. And when you become a permanent resident, you include in your application every child you have, whether or not they live with you, whether or not you recognize them, but they don't like lying. You can cheat them, but the government hates you lying. And people have lost their permanent resident status application because they didn't completely divulge things. So then the whole family gets the permanent resident status, everybody's on the deck. So having said that, in 2008, an agency was established here, it was a single person. That's when High Life moved from being, through the Hutterian Association that built it, started to come in and they recognized that they wanted to expand, they needed to look at new people coming from other countries. So they began their program, it really started in 2010, it really started to gain momentum. So in the instance, High Life has gone from 400 employees at the time to 1,600 plus. That's greatly due to immigration. And they have, High Life does it really well, they understand the process, they understand how to work with the provincial nominee program. And there's been all sorts of sort of changes and variations going along. The upshot is, they bring over regularly 200 temporary foreign workers consistently every year. That's their attrition rate. And their attrition rate is below industry standard. But what's also happened is retention. And so the retention we see is people come, work here, they may leave High Life, but they like to stay here. They like the community, they like the people, they feel welcome. Hence, we've got this rapid growth. And probably we are the fastest growing community due to immigration, definitely within Manitoba. And we are noted actually across the country. Niqwa, funnily enough, is well-known and respected in the Department of Immigration, Refugee and Citizenship, which funds these kinds of programs. And that's kudos to the community. And that's, that's really good. So in 2008, we had one person. In 2013, there were three working in the situation, and they were based out of the resource center, the old resource center. And then with repatriation happening, the move was made to the old Co-op building, where the agency is currently settled now. When we moved to the new Co-op building, I have to clarify, I was mistaken in the numbers I gave you the other day. We had two salary staff and two part-time, one part-time teacher, one part-time child manager. At this point, we have 14 salary staff and four part-time. So during the course of that time, when we're seeing individuals as permanent residency, it's not just simply cataloging them, having them come in, do the intake. We are targeted, we are given, we have a contribution agreement that specifically targets certain activities that need to be done. Activities in terms of, of settlement. So we do things like orientation sessions, information orientation sessions, that are both individual and group. We do what's called community connections, which is a real focus because integration is the buzzword. It's all about integration, not assimilation, which is very different. We always tell the newcomers coming here, listen, you're here not to lose your culture, you are here to gain and add another one. And throughout the line, Canada is different. It's different than almost every country other people come from. There are not just nuances, there are very large gaps. We find that within the workplace context. Different cultures have different attitudes within their workplace, so those are the kinds of things we deal with. So that's the sort of essence, so we have a settlement program, and they work on settlement issues. What do you need, is housing an issue, et cetera? Are we food safe? What do you, what do you want? Well, I like my spouse to, she just landed, I'd like her to get a job. So we have an employment relation, employment officer as well, who works specifically with the permanent resident population. Then from there, you have kids in school. So we have what's called settlement workers in schools program. We are currently in four school divisions. Pine Creek, Beautiful Plains, Rolling River, and Park West School Division. And I just placed a satellite officer, a settlement worker and schools officer out of Binscarce to cover that whole school division because they're getting a lot of newcomers coming over there. And it made sense, rather than to have somebody always having to drive up and back and forth. You want somebody who lives in the new community, right? We've all seen the workers or the project officers that live outside and come in here and think they know what they're doing. You don't understand their community, so living and working within the community makes sense. So we've got three workers and one coordinator in that program, so we have four staff in that program. So two settlement workers, four staff in Swiss. We have an admin and sort of finance person. The admin assistant is largely for me because, as you know, as things grow, the bureaucracy and the financial obligations and all that kind of thing come into play, and I just don't have time to be with clients anymore, which really saddens me, except if I'm doing a crisis debriefing or some special counseling. We also have an intake person who also is our volunteer coordinator. Beware, communities or organizations that are around, you're going to be hit up by our volunteer coordinator to see how we can partner. Because bottom line is, if you're working in a rural area, networking and partnerships are the name of the game. You're going to succeed or fail based on how you partner and how you collaborate and how you network. So we do an awful lot of that. Then in addition, we have a child mining, so that anyone who's attending any kind of programs that we offer, we have two child miners who will provide child mining from ages 18 months to 12 years of age onsite. We have two part-time teachers. We have an EAL, English as an additional language training program. It's nationally certified. And we have six classes, three morning classes, three evening classes, one of which I deployed since November down to Carberry to deal with some temporary foreign worker Ukrainians. The Ukrainians that have come over in the Kuwait are not refugees, so let's be clear. They are considered to be temporary foreign workers, which is challenging, because we're a PR organization. But we have been tasked with making our services available last fiscal year this past one and going forward. So where am I at now? I'm, oh, and then I added two additional programs. One of the things, we can deal with youth, we can deal with adults. We do not have anything dealing with preschool. There is an existing program that's been around in one form for probably about 40 or 50 years called the HIPPI program. Home instruction for parents and something in youth. I can never remember it. I just remember being a HIPPI in the 70s. So it's focused on ages three to five to help, it's a home visitor-based program, to help newcomer parents work with their children to prepare them for entry into kindergarten. It was originally designed for single moms, a low socioeconomic situation to help in that. And it's sort of has been readapt to work with newcomers. And it's really quite good. We're very pleased with it, very excited with what's happening. That was an amendment I got in September, a short term. The other amendment is something I've been after for a long time. It's one thing to look from three to five. Your critical developmental years are zero or prenatal to three. I have been on about it. And actually, IRCC has been very responsive, gave me a pilot project. And it's blowing me away, because it means we're able to start dealing with newcomer parents with, in the prenatal state, and then from birth to three, to work on early development, especially critically the first year, but the first year or three are important. Infant mental health, brain development, how you learn play-based learning, all sorts of things. It's been wonderful. Three months of research, we've had three months of practice. And those three amendments, because the person going up into Park West School Division was an amendment, I've just been notified today, they're going to be continued, which is really exciting. So we're looking at, we can go from birth to death and provide services as a continuum. The number of things we engage, the town is a regular contributor, but not only that, CRA, RCMP, we've had corrections people involved. Anybody and anyone who has something that relates to how we live in Canada, how that would facilitate integration, we'll partner with. And people have been exceedingly responsive. And I must say, one of the most common things we hear from newcomers about Nipoua, people say hello, I don't know who they are. People smile at the street. They feel incredibly welcome. CBC was here last year for Filipino heritage during that period of time, or around that time. And I spoke to one of the people there. They were wondering what was going on underneath. It couldn't be what it was, what it looked like. And they said, you know what? There is nothing underneath. It is what it is. People are happy, people like settling here. This is a really good community. So it's been very positive all the way around. To give you a little bit of information, I think I've covered, oh, we have also free transportation available for our clients who are able to, who need to come to a program, whether that's language, whether that's a visit for a settlement worker. So we have free transportation, they can get there, especially in winter, or they don't have a vehicle, that kind of thing. One of the things, because our big gap is being temporary foreign workers. A year and a half ago, I was able to access some funding through a different federal government, Employment and Social Development Canada, targeted, because this was a COVID initiative specifically for temporary foreign workers. I'm delighted to say I've kept it since October of 2021, and we're going through to 2024. Full-time employee, so they now can meet and do, because High Life is really good at inviting us to all the orientations and new deployment. Start talking then, so there's not that two-year gap before typically we were able to access them before. So I'm going to give you a little bit of statistics. Since 2008 to February of this year, we estimate just over 5,000 clients served. This past fiscal year, we have served just over 900 clients, around 400 of which are brand-new clients and 500 are returning clients. We are a very vibrant agency, a very vibrant community. And they say it takes a community to raise a child, and that's so true. It takes a community to respond to needs like this. Making that comment, one of the things we found out in our research project, our pilot project, one of the comments coming back was, we come from a country where our children are raised by extended family and community. We come to Canada, and we don't know what to do. We don't know quite how to parent here. And you've got different laws around discipline, about other things. So what really is exciting me about that pilot project is we are able to get in at the ground level. And it's not a home visitors program. It is focused on groups of parents, and the discussions and stuff that's coming out is just blowing me away. The rest of us really surprised us, changed the direction of the program to be very positive. That's the kind of evolution that's happened in this program. New stuff coming in. We were one of the five of the province that piloted the Settlement Workers in Schools program before it became more common, before it even went to the urban sector. There are five rural agencies, we were one of them. You need to be forward-thinking, you need to be prepared to think outside the box, you need to be prepared to ask people to engage, to be part of the process. And so there we are. And that sort of sums up the sort of general presentation I wanted to say. Are there any questions? We've talked before, one of the, I will say, we're not hitting every mark. We still are struggling to figure out how we engage with the agricultural community. We've had this comment before, I think the last time we presented, Darryl brought it up, and we've not made too much headway with that. But I've engaged in some sort of provincial kinds of support organizations that I think may help us prepare people for that. Questions?
How do you maintain your passion?
I'm severely medicated. It just, you know what? The feedback you get, because really the reward we get is when people come out and they're smiling and say, thank you. Thank you for helping us. And you need to know that the actual national average for newcomer landings, PRs, engaging in agencies like ours is not that high, it's less than 50%. There's a real struggle across the country to do that. We're different here. They get off the plane on Saturday, they come to Nipoua, they get their deployment, and they hear about us right away. And we're here in town, you know? So that whole sort of process lends itself to us seeing probably 80% of all newcomers we land. And now we see them as temporary foreign workers. We don't just wait until they become permanent residents. It's just exciting, it's nice to see people. It's nice to see the community grow. It's nice to see kids on the street. It's nice to see new schools. The impact it's had on the community, I would hazard to guess, and if I were a vetting man, I'd say that we probably are getting our hospital, because we are a larger community than we were 10 years ago. And there's every sense that that's going to continue to grow. There's no sense that it's not. And certainly, as a national initiative, that's definitely on the agenda, that Canada needs to do more immigration.
Are you seeing a larger influx of people coming here, choosing because they already know somebody who's here?
Yes, there's a lot of that. High Life does a tremendous job of promoting and going over and doing their recruiting trips. But yes, word of mouth gets around. We see that people from locales are applying to come. So when they come, they've already got somebody who's lived in their area. Because not all cultures, you can, well, all cultures, you can't categorize as the same. There's usually groups in the mountains, groups in the cities, groups up in the plains, groups, different kinds of, they have different cultural behaviors, they have different foods. So it's really nice. It's easier to do that here than, for example, if you're coming from a country, and I'm just going to pick a country, not picking on anything. Let's say you're coming from Syria, and you end up in a tiny little community where you have only Syrian family. You don't speak English very well. They're very welcoming, but it's a town of 800 people. There's support there, but then there's also, you don't have that connection to what your heritage is, to what you brought up. So when you really start looking at, I think what I like about this is there's so many levels. It's like an onion. No one's the same, there's similarities, but every family that comes across your plate or through that door is unique and is different. And one of our challenges is to make sure we're always looking at what their needs are through their lands, not through ours. It can be very easy to get that kind of, not complacency, but that level of sort of, oh yeah, here we go, you're from there, oh, okay, as opposed to, so who really are you? What are your needs? They're not necessarily the same as you, who came from the same area. So yeah, passion is just, it's just neat. It's just, you know, who wouldn't be? I mean, you can't stay in this unless you have some kind of passion. And I'll add, Nipoua, I came in '82 to stay two years. Go figure, you know? But I think a lot of us would be like that, so.
I think everybody should also realize that when we had the fire just over here by, where was that? By Red Apple.
Yeah.
When we had that fire, you know, one phone call, and you were there, and you had your team. That was a real plus for you guys.
Well, that was very much a team effort, because so was the town. I mean, fire department, but also town members, we had meetings in here, yes, I'm looking at you, Paul. That's what makes it work here, is that people are prepared to step up and participate and engage. And that's always been the case, and it's really good. Jeff has been very helpful. You're coming from a different culture, how you build the deck, it's a lot different, how you build the deck here, or do an extension or renovations. And it's critical, because again, that's all part of, well, we're here and new, and it looks so wonderful. Because remember, people are coming here, there's a section that are running away from conflict, they're trauma impacted, definitely. But the ones who are making conscious choices to come here are coming here because they see opportunities for themselves, but more so opportunities for their children. It's touted as the land of gold, but when you get here, you find it's the land of rules and regulations, paperwork, and wait time. And that's the three things I say to them. You've got to be prepared. It'll happen. It's just going to take time. There's certain, we have rules and regulations, that's why we get to the place where we are now. So it's interesting. It's those differences, right? You never know what's going to walk through your door. I always have a schedule, every day. And every day, it doesn't quite fit. There's always something, so.
Well, thank you very much, Don. That's an amazing success story. Certainly, you go back and congratulate yourself and your group. You know, we are just so happy you need the services that you provide the community. So thank you very much.
Well, and thank you to the community, and the council has always been supportive. That's really, those, these kinds of organizations are critical for success for situations like ours. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.